In theory, I'll call the meeting to order. Um, shouldn't be a super long meeting today and a little bit of fun near the beginning. Uh, first item of business is adoption of the agenda. Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, second by Counselor Peterson. Uh, resolve that the agenda be approved as amended by changing the order of business by moving item six point one, Oxford County Federation of Agricultural Agricultural Hall of Fame Award after item four point one, adoption of council minutes of previous meeting, and by changing the order of business by moving item thirteen and fourteen, closed session and consideration of matters arising from closed session after item six point one, Oxford County Federation of Agricultural Agricultural Hall of Fame Award.
Is there any discussion? All who's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And having adopted the agenda, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Counselor Gilvezzi.
Thank you. I, Deb Gilvezzi, declare pecuniary interests related to items eight point two point one, thirteen point one point three, and fourteen point three on the open and closed meeting agendas of April ninth, twenty twenty five because of the following reason: that my mother-in-law is a resident of Woodingford, Tillsimer.
And you have that in writing for the clerk? Thank you. Are there any other disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Not seeing any. Um, adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting. Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Warden Petrie, resolve that the council minutes of March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All who's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And delegations, presentations, and consideration thereof, Oxford County Federation of Agriculture and Davina Garner, if you want to come up to the podium, and I'll turn the show over to you.
Or is good? Um, one person is selected each year. It must be an individual who has demonstrated outstanding leadership in the agricultural sector and someone who has shown an unwavering dedication to creating a better rural community and stronger industry overall. We would like to give some background on this year's deserving recipient, Steve Veldman. Steve is always looking for opportunities to educate people on farming, whether it be with bus tours, field trips, people who have never been to the farm before, Oxford Dairy Days for grade four and five students in Oxford, or random people he has met who are a big, from a big city center and wish to learn more about farming. In nineteen eighty-five, he and his wife Carol purchased their farm on the forty-first line outside of Embro. It started with forty dairy cows and one hundred acres. In the years that followed, they expanded the barn to accommodate a hundred and ten cows and bought more acreage. Is that supposed to be? There we go. Slide through with some of them. Um, Steve and Carol Veldman have four children, Michelle, Christopher, Michael, and Chad. Their oldest son, Christopher, runs the home farm, which is a tile-stall barn milking ninety-five cows. Their son Chad runs a robot, robot barn, which milks around eighty cows. In twenty twenty, Steve and Carol built a new house on the same road halfway between the two farms and moved off the farm, but still very active in both of them. Their four children and seven grandchildren reside around the Embro area. On the farm, Steve and family are evaluating where energy is used on the farm and trying to find ways to use less, from heating, cooling, lighting, ventilation, and field work through conservation tillage and no-till. The farm had an energy audit done in the early two thousands, which determined they had the lowest kilowatt-hours of electricity used per liter of milk shipped of all the dairy farms tested. Steve takes an interest in developing energy-efficient opportunities and applying it to their operation. Some steps that have taken over the years to reduce energy would include switching barn ventilation farm fans to turkey curtains, install, installing a solar wall on the farm shop, putting timers on grain storage ventilation fans. Some of the organizations and events that Steve has been a volunteer include Farm Safety Days, Embro Agricultural Society events, Dairy Symposium, Breakfast on the Farm, four H, and his kids' hockey teams when they were growing up. Steve was an Oxford Milkway Director from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and four. He currently heads up the Oxford County Dairy Golf Tournament with the help of many volunteers, where the money raised helps fund the Oxford Dairy Days and youth scholarships. In two thousand and six, Steve became a member of Gaely Foods. In two thousand and seventeen, Steve became a director on the Gaely Foods Board and is still active on that board today. He has been involved in all of the courses and programs that Gaely has offered over the years. Steve, your dedication to agriculture, your community, and fostering the next generation of farmers is truly inspiring. Your contributions, whether through your leadership roles, volunteer efforts, or your openness to share knowledge, have left a lasting impact on Oxford County and beyond. Even just bringing your laughter is appreciated. On behalf of everyone here, we thank you for your hard work, passion, and commitment to the agricultural industry. Please join me in congratulating our two thousand twenty-four Agricultural Hall of Fame winner, Steve Veldman. Steve, if you want to come up, and I invite Warden Ryan to come and say a few words as well and present the award.
So not, um, as most of you know, I'm not from Zora Township originally, not from Oxford County, didn't grow up there, but, uh, soon as I ran for council, got to know Steve very quickly. Um, in my house, Steve's known as Dad's friend who drives the electric Mustang and the reason that we have to buy Gaely butter and sour cream. But for, for me, um, what I always like about Steve is the conversations that we have, you know, he calls me about one thing or another. Strangely enough, not to complain about his road, he loves his gravel road, so he doesn't call about that, but we talk about other things. And inevitably, at some point in the conversation, Steve will say, but why can't we? Why can't we do this or that? And we end up talking about, you know, what are the, the policy reasons, the legal reasons, the regulatory reasons that a thing can't be? And, and, but what if, what if we change those things, then could we do this thing or that thing? And, um, and I, I love that. I think that is how, you know, municipal government, all levels of government frankly, but more importantly, our communities move forward is by people questioning, yeah, yeah, I get it, that's, that's what we do, but, but why do we have to do it that way? And I think that is what Davina highlighted in the way that Steve and his family have run their farm business is like, yeah, I know, I know that's how the barn works, but why does it have to be that? Why, why can't it be a different way? Um, and he brings that to his community. He brings that to the Oxford County Federation of Agriculture. He brings that to the, the farming community in Oxford County. He's that person who's always questioning, like, you know, why can't we do it a different way? What if we did it that way? And I think there, that is really, um, the path to excellence, right? That's how you go from being good to being excellent, is to question each and every thing that you do and find a better way to do it. So really, um, embodying the spirit of the award of excellence, not just a good farmer, not just a good person, but demonstrating the tools that you use to actually achieve excellence. Um, so really happy and proud to present this award to Steve today.
So thank you very much, and thanks for the opportunity. I really have to thank Davina Garner for the nomination. Uh, anytime you get nominated by your peers, it's truly an honor. Um, and the OCFA for all the work that they put in, like every year, it's quite a process to go through the nominate, uh, nominations and, and choose somebody, and, and it's, it's never easy. There's never black and white, like this person for sure should win, and, and like if they get nominated, they're very, very good people for Ag and for our community. So, uh, thank you very much to OCFA. Thank you very much to Oxford County for taking time out of your meeting. And, um, when I thought of Hall of Fame, I thought, like if you look at it in sports, usually that means your career's done, you're washed up, and they put you in the Hall of Fame, but just by coincidence, the first of April, we signed the last documents for succession. So technically, I'm retired. That didn't get me out of chores this morning, but I am technically retired on paper. Um, but I just hope I'm maybe not washed up yet. So I got a lot I still want to do, and a lot of it is to do with the things that were mentioned by Davina. I am truly passionate about agriculture. Um, another passion is Gaely Foods. It's, it's amazing. Twelve hundred members own it. It's doing amazing work. Um, and I, and the sustainability part of our farm, I'm just hoping now that I'm sixty-five, there's still a lot I want to do with sustainability, but my biggest focus now is going to be on education, because I look at it, we've had a lot of hiccups in the thirty, forty years we've been doing sustainability, and sustainability is getting to be a big part of Ag now, and I just don't want everybody to start at a base level that we did. Um, I call our little hiccups just learning experiences. As soon as you start calling the mistakes, you get frustrated and quit. So I look at it, we've had a lot of learning experiences, and I don't want everybody in our community to go through them, learning experiences. So, uh, thank you very much, and I, I really, really appreciate this. So have a great meeting. Thank you.
Right. Now that everybody's in a good mood, closed session, Council Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded Counselor Racioli. The council rise and go into a closed session to consider a delegation from legal counsel and reports PW bracket CS twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven and WDFL CS twenty twenty-five dash zero-two regarding the receiving advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Is there any discussion? All who's in favor? Opposed?
Ten forty and we're back from closed and consideration of matters arising from closed. Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. Moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Warden Petrie, resolved that the recommendations contained in the memorandum and delegation from legal counsel be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And fourteen point two, PWCS twenty twenty five dash twenty seven, Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mayberry, resolve that the recommendations contained in report PW twenty twenty five dash two seven be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And we're going to pause for Counsel Gilvasey to leave the chamber. Fourteen point three, WDFL CS twenty twenty five dash oh two, Counselor Martin.
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Palmer, resolved that the recommendations contained in report WDFL CS twenty twenty five dash zero two be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Public meetings? None. Delegations, presentations, consideration thereof is complete. Consideration of correspondence. Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you very much, Warden. Through you, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Palmer, resolved that correspondence item seven point one on the open meeting agenda of April ninth, twenty twenty five be received.
Is there any discussion? I asked for this to be added because there was discussion at a previous council meeting, I think it was the last one, about potential tariff responses. And I had mentioned that Western Ontario Wardens was taking some action on this. So I just asked for this to be put on the agenda so that it would be in front of council formally. So if there's no, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. To your knowledge, has there been any response on this?
To my knowledge, no. But frankly, I haven't followed up. I haven't got anything back from Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, but I haven't asked if there has been follow-up either. So any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And reports from departments, eight point one point one, Human Services HS twenty twenty five dash oh five, Employment Services Transformation for Ontario Works. And Acting Director Smith, is there anything you want to highlight for council?
Thank you, Warden. Just a bit of an update regarding Employment Services Transformation, since it was implemented back in January of twenty twenty four. And we do have Kelly Bibwell in the audience here who wrote the report, one of our acting managers, if there's any questions from council. Thank you.
Questions from council on the report? Not seeing any. Then Counselor Acione.
Thank you. Through you, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Palmer, resolved that the recommendation contained in report HS twenty twenty five dash five titled Employment Services Transformation for Ontario Works be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And eight point two point one, Whittingford Lodge, WDFL twenty twenty five dash oh three, Long Term Care Committee of Management Quarterly Report. Director Dagger, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
Yes, through your warden to members of council. Just as for information, the committee of management report is one that is required through the Fixing Long Term Care Act. The committee of management is the board of long-term care. Whoops. With that, you know, it is our responsibility as staff to come to the council and provide them with information and input in regards to quality metrics, concerns that we're having within the home. It also becomes the voice of the residents and advocacy through our report if they are unable to attend council. The committee of management reports as well will provide residents, if they deem necessary, to have their voice heard publicly and be able to attend council if required, if they feel that the reports are not meeting their needs as well. Within the context of this report, what you'll see in highlights is the quality metrics and the standards of care to which we're providing. And again, this is publicly reported on all of our documents on Health Quality Ontario and our website as well. To that information, Whittingford Lodge is a very transparent organization, as we saw through the accreditation process. We have a hundred percent completion of all of our requirements that if any incident occurs that we feel may cause any concern to the public or the interpretation from the public, we are always making sure that it's reported. Again, with that hundred percent transparency and reporting, we're also going to see numbers of a higher threshold. When I also look at, when you also look at the context of the report and you look at the details with the quality metrics, you will also see that in some applications, we are above the provincial average. And it's important to talk about that because one thing that's most important, if we look at Whittingford Lodge's whole operating three facilities, we also know too that we have, if one individual was to go to hospital from a thirty-four bed home, one of thirty-four raises that percentile quite in depthly. So that's something to look at, too. Those numbers that we report are combined efforts. So I stress that to council, that where the numbers look like we're above the provincial average, I can certainly say there are a lot of other homes that have a higher number. So certainly, we are doing our due diligence. We also saw that through the report, through the accreditation process, where they were satisfied with the numbers to which we were presenting, even though in some applications, above the provincial average. Just a few, at a high level, a few highlights that I want to provide to council, again, that will showcase things that we have brought forth for recommendations or needs. When we look at, from a staff retention standpoint, we are seeing in one quarter, we saw a lot of retirements happening. But what we've seen as a result of that, too, as the trends are going on, we're seeing an improvement in our retention, developing very in-depth orientation processes, providing more orientation to our staff to feel more confident. When we look at the transfer to the hospitals, we're seeing an improvement in the transfer records to hospitals from quarter one of twenty twenty four to quarter four. That's largely in part for the efforts that we have put into place at Whittingford Lodge. Adding the second nurse practitioner has helped immensely with reducing emergency transfers, but also training all of our registered staff in the techniques, skill set and techniques of IV therapy. Often, what we're seeing for many of our residences, they're requiring a transfer to hospital for hydration and/or antibiotics. Now we have the opportunity in all forms and routes to provide that medication to our residents, which is certainly going to see that trend even into quarter one of twenty twenty five, reduce even further. When we look at, one of the reasons we showcase the critical incidences within the context of the report, a variety of different reasons. One, where the number seems high, certainly what we can see is because of that compliance and that dedication to a hundred percent transparency, we're going to see a higher number of reportables. What we're also seeing with those numbers is, and one of the things I'd like to stress on that metric, is that we've had no orders. And that is something that we're very proud of. Orders, and certainly through our scope of reviews from the Ministry of Long Term Care, we're seeing a lot more inspections on a twice-a-month basis now. We're seeing longer stays within the home. And certainly, what we're seeing is the result of no orders. So even though we've had more reports, we're certainly seeing less, no orders at all, which is what we want to achieve. When we also look at the infections that have been attained from hospital, those are those residente infections that you'll see. We have mitigated the risk within, internally within our home. the risk within, internally within our home with our IPAC team to make sure there's no spread of those infections when people are transferred from hospital. Again, we look at a multiple of, multitude of different viruses, nosocomial infections that are picked up in hospital, and therefore, it's very difficult for any resident, any individual, not to, at some point, obtain an infection from a lengthy stay at hospital. So certainly, what we're doing internally is we're mitigating that spread throughout the rest of the residents. And beyond that, when we look at the time on task for those critical instances, I think it's a testament to the staff for the work they're doing and stressing to the committee of management, the time on task is very in-depth. Where we might have twenty reportables or twenty-two reportables, all of those garner an inspection. So each and every time that we report to the ministry, the ministry will come to us. They could be in our facility for three weeks, they could be in our facility for three days. That's work that staff are doing above and beyond their daily work, supporting the ministry in that timeframe. But it also speaks as well, too, that as we see those numbers going up with the critical instances, it also speaks to the fact of the population to which we're enduring now in long-term care. As many of you will know, we're seeing a lot more aged individuals coming to long-term care. We're seeing a lot more individuals coming with advanced comorbidities. Mental health is becoming more prevalent. Cognitive impairments is obviously prevalent with eighty-six percent of our population now has a diagnosis. So certainly, this will attest to those reasons why we see those critical instances going up because of episodes of responsiveness, where people will become responsive to one another. In the context of the critical reports or critical incidences, it's also defined by when we have an outbreak. An outbreak is a critical incident. So again, when we see those trends going up, it's also a variable to which we cannot control and mitigate, because again, every time there's a critical incident, that can equate to a virus or an outbreak. So I just want to stress that to council as well, that not all situations of critical incidents is one of a situation where of a violent nature. It could also be one of outbreak. It could be somebody who has had a complaint, a written complaint, to the home. A written complaint becomes a critical incident where we have to do our due diligence. So with that, I'm certainly open to questions, Warden, for members of council in regards to the context of the report. These style of reports will be brought back on a quarterly basis to council and certainly open to feedback and needs from council, if there's things that you would like to see differently done in the report. So thank you, Warden.
Questions from council? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. On the staff retention graphic, we have fairly consistent, but an average number of people leaving, resigning from their position. Is there a part of, is a lack of wage parity between the private sector and the public, private and public sector, a factor in the loss of PSWs and resignations there? Or is it people who are currently employed part-time at Woodingford Lodge that might find full-time employment somewhere else? Is that a factor or is that much more complex and a wider range of issues?
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Martin. So very good question. What we're seeing right now in trends is, again, as I mentioned earlier in the context of the report, we operate two of the smallest homes in Ontario. So with that, it's very difficult for us to develop a staffing schedule model in which we are able to sole staff an individual per site. The reason we don't do that simply because is if you're staff solely at a thirty-four-bed home, that also will reduce the amount of hours or available hours that's available to the hundred-and-sixty-bed facility. So certainly, that creates some complexities. What we are seeing actually is the support that the County of Oxford is providing to the staff through wages is certainly been well-received by our staff members and certainly is a retention piece, that they feel well-supported in their standard of living. And again, not to say, you know, certainly, those are things now that the ministry are guiding us, that we don't have much direction on. The hours of care per day as well, we've talked at council in regards to the hours of care per day, the four hours of care per day. This has also certainly been beneficial from a retention standpoint, simply because staff are feeling better supported. We've implemented and we saw an increase in staff that were hired, and that was through that hours of care per day model or portion. This is providing more support to each other, better support to the residents, and it's providing a better consistency in care delivery and less stress and strain on the staff members. So again, that is a model as well that's going to help staff be retained within the workforce.
Any other questions? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Acioli, resolved that the recommendation contained in report WDFL twenty twenty five dash zero three titled Long Term Care Commitment to Management Quarterly Report be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. I had the opportunity to go over to Woodingford Lodge here in Woodstock a couple of weeks ago and had the opportunity to visit the family transition program. And I just cannot speak highly enough about the value of this program for Oxford residents who, in the coming weeks, months, or years, might transition into long-term care. The opportunity to just connect, be familiar with the facility, the recreation opportunities, it was just a very comfortable, relaxing atmosphere. Staff had an incredible compassion for each guest each day, knowing their history, and just being able to integrate people into the room each day. I walked into the room and a group of people were playing croqueno, and I wanted to sit down and enjoy them. It was enjoying them. It was just that much of a comfortable atmosphere. So this is a program that I don't think is available everywhere. I think it is quite unique to Oxford and Woodingford Lodge, but has tremendous value, I think, to caregivers who need that bit of respite, but also to individuals who are looking to transition into long-term care. I would encourage every counselor to book an appointment to go over and visit this program. Just incredible value.
Anyone else? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And eight point three, Public Works, eight point three point one, PW twenty twenty five dash twenty-two, Contract Award, Countywide Culvert Replacements on Parts of Oxford Road Six, Eight, Twenty-five, Fifty-nine, and One-Nineteen. Director Abercrombie, is there anything you'd like to highlight for council?
Thank you, Warden Ryan. So this is our annual culvert replacement contract in front of council today. And just a reminder, this is done ahead of normally an asphalt resurfacing program that normally either follows the next year or within two years to just help the program continue to move. And that's all I have if council has any questions.
Questions from council? Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden. Through you, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, resolved that the recommendation contained in report PW twenty twenty five dash twenty-two titled Contract Award, Country, Countywide Culvert Replacements on Parts of Oxford Road Six, Eight, Twenty-five, Fifty-nine, and One-Nineteen be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And eight point three point two, PW twenty twenty five dash twenty-three, Contract Award Janitorial Services. Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council there?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Questions from council? Counselor Palmer.
Is this, this a new company? Is that because the old company was not doing a good job or just because we wanted to save a bit of money?
Through the warden to council. So every three years, we go out for procurement. So this vendor was the lower bidder. They have been a supplier to the county in the past, but it's our practice every three years to go back out to market to get the updated pricing.
Any other questions? Counselor Gilvezzi.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Tate, resolve that the recommendation contained in report PW twenty twenty five dash two-three titled Contract Award Janitorial Services be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Eight point three point three, PW twenty twenty five dash twenty-four, Contract Award, Oxford Road Six Bridge Three Seven Four Six Two Three Rehabilitation. Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council there?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Questions from council? Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer, resolve the recommendations contained in report number PW twenty twenty five twenty-four titled Contract Award, Oxford Road Six Bridge Three Seven Four Six Two Three Rehabilitation be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. These last three reports have all been the same. They've been here to approve something that's already been approved through our budgeting process. And really, it comes down to our procurement or our purchasing policy that brings them here because they're over a certain dollar amount. But I know staff had to have time, and I think that to write these reports, and it takes time for them to get here. So I, for one, think that there may be a better way to move these things through. And so I'll be bringing forward a motion to discuss that sort of thing at the next meeting to see how we can streamline some of this, but still have the proper oversight when we're approving projects. But, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into reports, but really, if they were, some of these were under a million, they would, they would not, we wouldn't see them. And the great work would still get done. So I think there's opportunity for more efficiency there.
Anyone else? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Eight point three point four, PW twenty twenty five dash twenty-five, Request for Project Approval, Water and Sanitary Linear Project, City of Woodstock. Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight there?
Thank you, Warden Ryan. So this is just adding three projects within the city of Woodstock to support development and additional process, or sorry, roads for their reconstruction. So this is just the water and sanitary components for those projects.
Questions from council? Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvezzi, resolve that the recommendations contained in report PW twenty twenty five dash twenty-five titled Request for Project Approval, Water and Sanitary Linear Project, City of Woodstock be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Eight point three point five, PW twenty twenty five dash twenty-six, Norwich Waste Water Treatment Plant Capacity Expansion Municipal Class Environmental Assessment Study. Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight in that one? It's just you and me talking back and forth here, basically.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. So before you today, we have the preferred solution from the class environmental assessment for the Norwich Waste Water Treatment Plant. So after an evaluation, we are recommending expansion and upgrades to the existing lagoon system using a submerged attached growth reactor technology. And this was the highest scored solution based on operational, economical, environmental, and social cultural criteria. So approval of this report will allow staff to issue the notice of completion for this report and start a thirty-day public review for the document. So there's no immediate financial impact regarding this decision. The estimated cost for the upgrade is, however, twenty-one million dollars, and design is anticipated to begin in twenty twenty-seven. And these upgrades, the updated costs and everything, will be updated in the development charge and asset management planning as appropriately during those times. And happy to answer any questions, as well as Senior Manager of Water Waste Water is here as well, if the council has any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Counselor Palmer, then Counselor Schaefer.
Yep. Thank you, Warden. On behalf of the town of Norwich, we are very happy to see this project moving ahead.
Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Just have a question regarding the submerged attached growth reactor. Is that a new technology or has that been around for a while?
I'm going to turn this over to Dawn to answer questions regarding the technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the warden to council. That exists and has for a while. It, we went to visit it as a group, one in service just north of Sarnia. I forget the name of the small community, but they had an operation that was working successfully for a number of years, and it was producing a very high-quality effluent.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Palmer.
Yes. Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded Counselor Peterson, resolve that the recommendations contained in report PW twenty twenty five dash twenty-six titled Norwich Waste Water Treatment Plant Capacity Expansion Municipal Class Environmental Assessment Study be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Eight point four, Corporate Services, eight point four point one, CS twenty twenty five dash thirteen, Twenty Twenty Five Tax Policy and Rates Bylaw. Director Buggner, is there anything you would like to highlight for council?
Thank you, Warden. Very briefly, this report is brought to council today, presented to council today to introduce a bylaw that will adopt the twenty twenty five tax policy for the county and the area municipalities. As you will recall, at our last council meeting on March twenty-six, council received recommendations of the collective area municipal treasurers in terms of tax policy for twenty twenty five. We are not proposing any change from those that have been employed since twenty nineteen, pre-COVID, and simply because there has not been an assessment update as mandated or as deferred by the province of Ontario. There have been no increases or changes to the current value assessment applied to properties specifically for the purpose of maintaining some form of stability from a financial perspective in terms of how municipal levies and taxes are distributed among the various property classes. As we are still experiencing some financial challenges in our local economy, as well as national and global-wide, we do feel it's prudent to maintain those, that stability for all of the property classes within the county, because it doesn't seem that any of the property classes are going to be immune from what's going on right now out there. So the policy provisions as presented within the bylaw that would be presented to you later in the meeting then are reflective of those same policy recommendations presented on the twenty-sixth. So as was indicated at the twenty-sixth meeting as well, that would translate into tax rates that would impose a ninety-one dollar, approximately ninety-one dollar change on the average or the typical household within Oxford County from an Oxford County perspective. And that's the composite impact. So that includes the general levy, the library levy, and the court security levy. So a portion of that isn't applicable to the city of Woodstock. So their increase would be slightly lower. Similarly, on tax, the tax impact on farm-related properties, that would be approximately a hundred and seventy-three dollars year-over-year for twenty twenty five. If there's any questions, I can take those now.
Questions from council? Counselor Mayberry.
Just one quick one. Do we have any idea at all when the province might, in fact, finish their review of the assessment system?
Through the warden to Counselor Mayberry, unfortunately, they're unable to give us a firm date on that. They just say they're continuing to work on it.
Just because it's been quite a while and I probably have forgotten, when did we actually start this review? Or when did the province start the review?
Through the warden to Counselor Mayberry, it was right at the start of the pandemic, pretty much.
So in six years, they haven't quite got it done yet, is what you're telling us? Just for clarification, or five years, if you want to call it that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Acioli, resolve the recommendation contained in report CS twenty twenty five dash one-three titled Twenty Twenty Five Tax Policy and Rates Bylaw be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Unfinished business, none. Motions? Notice of motion? Count, Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mayberry. Whereas the provincial government passed COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act twenty twenty, SO twenty twenty, C eighteen, Bill one ninety-seven, which requires support from all municipalities within three point five kilometers of a landfill application. And whereas Oxford County has never officially endorsed this change made in Bill one ninety-seven, and whereas at least one company is registered lobbyist with the provincial government for the purposes of removing this requirement, therefore be it resolved that Oxford County Council fully endorse the changes passed in COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act twenty twenty, SO twenty twenty, C eighteen, Bill one ninety-seven, giving municipalities within three point five kilometers of a new landfill application the right of approval. And further that, more that advocating that this requirement stay in place and that it be included in the list of items Oxford County advocates on.
Deputy Warden is the mover. Do you wish to speak to that?
Yeah. So certainly, it's concerning when we see that something that we fought so hard and to get the right for is now being actively worked upon to be changed by, I know of at least one other company now that is also registered for this. So I think we need to be on our toes and make sure that we can. And since Oxford County never officially endorsed it, it's hard to advocate for that. So I want to give the power for, to unleash the warden upon the- So I want to give the power for, to unleash the warden upon the community and speak and join that fight. So I think it's something that, as we move forward, this was a very important piece. It does not stop these projects from going forward. There has been many cases of where municipalities have given the right, where things do happen, including landfills in eastern Ontario. It gives the power to negotiate and make sure that it is in the best interest of your community and have that say. So it is something that's, is important, and I would hope that, I would ask that council support this to make sure that we can continue what we're doing and allow the county to join in a letter asking the province to reiterate their support for this, having that Bill 197, what Bill 197 gave us. Thank you.
Counselor Mayberry is the second.
Just comment that most of us remember that the town of Ingersoll did a lot of work to get this ability or right for the municipalities, and I think it was, I think it was well-done and appreciated it very much. The fact that the county didn't actually endorse it probably was an oversight in previous terms of council, and I think we should correct it. So I'm fully supportive of this motion.
Anyone else? I want to thank the deputy warden for bringing this forward for two reasons. First of all, as Counselor Mayberry said, the town of Ingersoll at the time worked very hard, and, and as I said at the time, I was stunned that this actually happened. But it happened, and, you know, not surprisingly, some industry is pushing back on it. But I also want to thank them because, it is only because of the town of Ingersoll's, you know, continued vigilance on this issue that we even know that that counter advocacy is happening. And we were considering, you know, signing a joint letter for heads of council, and this council, I want to point out to you, you're, I was all ready to sign the letter, but our newly created role of government relations said, hold on a second, we never actually officially said that we thought that was a good bill, and before we go and advocate, or as the deputy warden says, unleash on our advocacy, we should actually have council consider that and decide, do we actually support that or not? So I think this is a good motion for both of those reasons, and we'll absolutely be supporting this and stand ready to be unleashed. Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Warden, through. I just want to say that, yeah, Ingersoll did a lot, but really, this was in Oxford County, this was a community thing that came together. You know, we each do our part. We can build a lot of taglines in there. So really, I remember the communities being, the community was really pushing this, and really, it took 150 municipalities to come to the table to say they didn't want this. So, yeah, it's, it really can't do anything alone, and this is a big one that affects us all, truly affects us all, so that's a good one to keep off books.
Any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Any inquiries? Not seeing any. Close sessions being dealt with. Bylaws, Counselor Tate?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer, resolve that bylaw 6720-2025 and 6721-2025 be given a first and second reading.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Tate?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer, resolve that bylaw 6720-2025 and 6721-2025 be given a third and final reading.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Warden.
Counsel, Counselor Peterson?
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Deputy Warden Petrie, resolve that council meeting of April 9, 2025 be adjourned until the next meeting scheduled for April 23, 2025 at 9:30 a.m.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried.